Oh, I'd like to call 20G to adjourn please. Sorry, I just got the notice that Scott's back. Can I ask everyone to get up and pledge allegiance to the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, and the United States of America, and to the people for which this stands, my nation, my God, and the invisible, but every human justice for all.
Okay. So, thank you all for coming to tonight's meeting. It is February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I mean, Valentine's Day, everyone. In accordance with our opening announcements, Doug Filson is in the back of the room videotaping the meeting. And it's also being put onto Zoom for viewing and audio. In accordance with the resolution twenty dash twenty-three rules of conduct, we will be observing a three-minute time period for people to make comments. And with that, we'll get right into the meeting. Okay, do you have any other agenda? Do I get a question? Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Please be advised that the board supervisors met an executive session on Tuesday, January sixteenth, to discuss matters of potential real estate acquisitions and pending litigation. And then we go to item eight, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Hold on.
Sorry.
Yeah, open forum got cut off. So you can see the time for open forum for, oh, no, it did at the top page for open forum on actual. So anything that's listed on the agenda.
Thank you. So, yeah, all right, open forum for anything that's listed on the agenda, that's actually on the agenda. Anyone on this side? Aaron?
Yeah, Aaron Hamilton, twenty-five, works for, just a question on that announcement number four. The potential real estate acquisition, am I familiar with what they're going to find out the details about?
I'm not sure.
No, I mean, there's nothing imminent at this point in time or was considering a possible opportunity. If anything would come to light, it would obviously have to be given in the public session. You don't need to amend it, etc.
Okay. Anyone else from this side of the room? Anyone on the left side, my left side? Valerie?
Valerie Schultz, one sixty-five, Caitlin Moore. I know you're going to be having a report for Parks and Rec. I just would like clarification on what the purpose is of the sixty thousand dollars that was transferred from the general fund into Parks and Rec. My understanding last year was that was going to be used for improvements to Ullport Park. At the last Parks and Rec meeting, there was more discussion about a disc golf course being put in. And there's, I think, some confusion on Parks and Rec board about what that money was supposed to be used for. So if you guys could give some clarification, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else on this side of the room have anything they'd like to say? All right, first item on the consent agenda is to approve the supervisor's consent from January.
Tracy, why one? Is that the one we were giving this as a consent agenda?
Yeah, my motion to consent agenda, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. So your motion?
I'll make the motion.
Paul Mader?
Aye.
Okay. I have a math department report. First, do we have COG meeting information?
Yes, so I have a few things, a few items to address. First is back to December, and then again, beginning of January, I did a visit next door in our. Donnie and his people, and I just wanted to make a comment for, I guess, the residents. Worked in a lot of shops, worked with a lot of equipment, and they're within the ties to keep that shop and take care of our equipment. Should be commended, very nice, very organized. And I didn't have prior plans, kind of jumped in there at a certain time, and that place looked great. So, great job to you guys. We also had a little talk, had a little safety meeting. So, a lot of respect there, and I appreciate that. Also want to comment, also want to comment, will be a couple of weather events we had, one-six, one-sixteen, and then beginning of the day. Hard work from them guys, a lot of dedication to keeping us safe, keeping the roads accessible. Great job to Donnie and his team, all accidents, entry-free. Very good, appreciate that. January fifth, Lauren and I attended a Honeyberg Fire Company, their reword meeting. And township was presented with an appreciation plaque for the money that was given for the chief's new vehicle. Right now, the plaque is in the office, but it will be. So, very good meeting, and a big thanks to them for working out and having us out for their meeting. The COG meeting, attended the COG meeting, January, January thirty-first. And items of discussion, EAC, and they were looking for some leadership on the EAC side of it, and getting back to the environmental action. They talked a little bit about animal control and looking for, I guess, other municipalities going in towards animal control, pretty known animal control group. And also trash, create a trash authority to better utilize some of the resources that some of the municipalities have, the manpower, as well as, I guess, helping out the trash collection that has been prepared for many municipalities, lack of equipment and manpower. And there's also just a heads up, if anybody's interested, government two-on-one class I took last year. I recommend anybody who's interested in learning a little bit more on the insides of the government. COG puts together a nice, nice presentation with that, I believe that's February twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Okay, item two, it would be Don Johnson, who's in the back.
I'd like to report that we, we've had a couple of challenges here in the past few weeks. We had a couple of snowstorms one week, and then we had the wind all weekend, and a small couple of breakdowns, nothing serious. But the snowstorm we had yesterday was a real challenge for us, so wet, so heavy. It snowed so fast and hard, and then we had a couple of state roads that went closed in township, and they, they put their traffic on our roads. So we had to, I had to pull a guy off one of his routes and put it, keep it right on the road that they were putting all the state traffic on. And it just kind of put us behind, but I mean, my guys, they did a great job. We started at three o'clock in the morning, nobody took a coffee break, nobody took lunch, we worked to the end. They did a great job. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
I did, I'm sorry, I also wanted to comment too on, I think, from the very first storm back on, what was that? The six we experienced issues with Penn Dock, and right off the bat. I know that we talked, me and Donnie talked, I talked to the chief, I was talking to the mayor. And we got warned or alarmed into it, and you guys did a conference call with Penn Dock. I don't think it improved much, but we did what, because we've seen over the last couple of storms that it kind of didn't really get any better with Penn Dock. But we did need monitor for not doing what they, they need to.
Yeah, unfortunately, they have not had a written manager for the county for quite some time. They've had some high turnover and against perfect storms. Because we bought against Lancaster County and Berks County, and they're all separate Penn Dock districts. So we are literally at the turnaround spot for many of these townships. So we did meet with three principals from Penn Dock, and we met with one of the borough council members in Don, I want to. And we made some type of agreement, and we changed the lines where what was occurring before was that they were stopping on Route ten. The one district was stopping short, and then the other contractor was stopping at the bottom, so they agreed to overlap it. Obviously, that didn't really change because they hadn't showed up too much.
I, I think Warren just signed from the other end of Route ten, they were supposed to come down and turn around at the bottom. They did, and they kept that hill better. It was Chester County that lacked behind again.
Okay, I'm pretty crispy, not sure any, I think Miranda's filling in for her.
I'm Miranda, by the way, you guys don't know who I am. Christie's report is available in the digital version, there's not much there. There's one thing she really wanted to stress. We are closed this upcoming Monday in relation to President's Day, and we will be open Tuesday at nine AM on Friday. And that's pretty much everything.
Thank you. Item four, Warren Mansky, our county manager.
As always, this has asked that the board assess my written managers' report, which is in the board act. It is probably facing as well, and I'd ask you to answer any questions now or at any time to make sure that you have answers.
Item five, Honeyberg County Library.
Do not see anybody from there, but we just have a standing place for them in case they do show up, they're not here. And I will also tell you, number nine, Twin Valley Peace Law Association is both with the president. He's going to be keeping the reports about the status of the organization as it relates to any township at the March meeting.
Land preservation, I don't think there's anybody here for land preservation either.
I still don't believe we have any notification of the applications that are in the Chester County that come in and include that. So I'm not aware that they made a decision. So we're still being notified twenty twenty-three applications, so we can still make room until they have twenty twenty-four once again.
Okay. Planning Commission, we do have several members on our planning commission here. Normally, Mike gives the update for that. Are you, Devi? Gary, you okay with that, giving the update? Come on, Eric?
Thank you. Just a quick update for the board, there are several items tonight that were recommended for action tonight on your agenda later regarding zoning hearing applications. We also have, at our upcoming meeting next week, next Thursday, the twenty-second, I believe it is. We are going to be discussing Cabaret Chapel land development plan, the Tell Hi land development plan, a land development on Horseshoe Pike for Vernon McIntyre, and also a potential additional zoning hearing application that is forthcoming. So people will potentially be seeing one or more of those plans and applications for you at the March meeting. If the planning officials got anything else, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right, and as Warren had said, nobody's here for Twin Valley baseball. Oh, I completely missed the Parks and Rec.
Okay, so we have two, two members from Parks and Rec.
Hi, I'm Summer Hale, and I'm the secretary of Parks and Rec. As a recap of our last meeting, we finalized a list of priorities in regard to Ullport Park, and that was submitted to the supervisors. At last week's, or last month's meeting, we discussed a disc golf course which Kevin is leading right now. And we started exploring the idea of a township-wide survey reverting Parks and Recreation activities. In regards to some questions that we had, first was, are we allowed to conduct a survey? And second, has there been any consideration to the limited parking at Ullport Park? This was brought to us by a few attendees at the meeting, as well as members of the committee. Given that the skate park is going to be occupying grass, which has often been used for overflow, as well as removal of the fence, which may entice people to park on the hill.
Thank you.
Do you want to handle that as far as some of those questions?
So I spoke with the church, we were going to try to put signs up there, we didn't park them. As it relates to the parking spots, I think that would be a discussion I might have with Mike to see what we're at with our parking and for these coverage. Obviously, if there's any traditional parking, we can revisit that.
But the signs are a good idea, that is, it's a good neighborhood, thanks.
And in addition, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the church did indicate that they're willing to enter a major overarching written agreement to indicating that we reach out to the church, we don't have, we're going to have some overflow parking. We check with them first, they are fine with us utilizing their parking, and we will also offer that return if they have a large church function. And we don't have anything coming to park that day that we would be fine with their members using their parking spots.
Yeah, that's cool, they're, they're at it's cool?
Yes.
Wow, that's great.
So I think he's already had that, I think that offer is it, it's always been there. Obviously, we'll have to bring in the as well association because we can't just slate that for employees due to their activities. So they'll just would probably on their agency to reach out. Because we do know when they schedule, but we don't know when that's going to happen. So I have to announce that it will be a friendly relationship, we can fully utilize their parking spots.
Awesome. A few things I wanted to bring up. As, you know, before spring next year, can we maybe think about addressing the don't parking up, up around the playground area? And maybe this year, limited to the side you said, this is any cap, parking only?
Up near the dance courts?
Just, yes, just, I mean, I know we don't have a police force here, you know.
We know who's using the park and when they're there, and we can direct them if they wish to utilize our field, that they can't be parking on this spot.
A letter to these, to the, to the two groups that do use it, I was thinking.
We'll put some signs up, Don will be more than happy with the parking on grass signs.
I think maybe if we communicate with them, I think maybe they'll just maybe get a little better at it. Last week, I attended the West Brandyline Trail and Open Space meeting. And just to see what, you know, what, what the status was of segment one. I believe their, their, that's their part in the, in the Ice Del Trail, the segment one. Our, and it sounds like they're moving along pretty good now. They have these, which is correct. What is the status of, of segment two, which is Hunterford Township? Is, is this something maybe we should start thinking about now? I think they're both the same landowners.
It is posted up, but my understanding is that once West Brandyline completed their easement agreement, that they would put, there was no contact in connection with the administration, and that would be, that's our, that process of picking up, getting the easement on that, that parcel, which is the Sunoco Park.
Kind of like Don, that's right. Just want to let you know that we're partially, we're stuck at work with Troop Nine. Possibly get some labor, Eagle Scout projects. If we do go forward with the disc golf course, I think we'll have the estimates at the March meeting for the disc golf course. There's some things we're going to talk about tomorrow night. And I reached out to Jennifer at the Honeyberg Library, Council Library. And we're going to possibly partner to redo the learning trail into a storybook trail. And she was talking about maybe helping us there and possibly having one of her storytimes at Ullport Park. Sometime in the fall, if we can convert the learning trail to the storybook trail. These are all, all these items are items that are on the Ullport Park jump plan from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, mentioned redundantly in the comprehensive plan and the Ullport plan, so.
Kevin, are you proposing that the disc golf course is going to take priority over, over repair Ullport Park?
Excuse me?
Is the Parks and Recreation Committee proposing that the disc golf park take priority over repairing?
I don't think we've done, I don't, I don't think we've proposed anything like that.
Okay, I just wasn't sure why we were talking about building more facilities when we haven't repaired Ullport Park yet.
Oh, yeah, there's one, I just take a look at you guys before I sit down. Warren, can we get together, or anyway, board supervisors, whatever, we want to possibly get into some sponsorship, fundraising for the disc golf course. See, and I wanted to know what the branders would be, if anyone's done anything like that here before. Maybe some sponsorships, local businesses could, could help us out.
I'll have that, take a, take a legal look at any potential roadblocks or issues or perhaps not. Yeah, so I'll have that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
As far as the disc golf course, is the, have you made it to a point of feasibility of space and utilization way of what's required?
Yeah, I have.
You didn't get there yet?
You know, we're, we're there. I, I just didn't want to make any, you know, in March, we'll unveil our, our plan.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, item G, new business. Approve, not approve the listing bills for payment as prepared by the treasurer. Do I hear a motion? I'll second. Paul Mader? Motion to support or not support or take no position on zoning hearing application twenty twenty-four dash two, anus esh variances in order to construct a rural occupation at twelve twenty-five Beverden or tax parcel twenty-two dot ten, at seven dot three, in excess of the five thousand square foot permitted per lot area and excess of the maximum impervious coverage, and we add zoning fiscal.
And just for the sake of the board, the planning commission did discuss this application. Essentially, what you're looking at from the beginning is a rural occupation building is allowed up to five thousand square feet. They're proposing two hundred and eighty-four square feet beyond that five thousand max. In addition, the impervious coverage maximum is five percent. They're proposing a half percent beyond that for a total of five point five percent. So, planning commission felt those were minor deviations and recommended support on the twenty application. This will also go through land development at some point, so you'll see it back before you.
Do I hear a motion to support, or do we have another question?
So I'm just going to ask Mike, what typically, position boards typically take in terms of? Yeah, so for, for zoning applications, you're usually making a recommendation, zoning hearing board, of supporting the application, opposing the application, or just taking a no, no position on an application, which essentially just allows the zoning hearing board to make the decision on the, on the request. Do you think though, any of those three options, it's typically been in the past that some form of position is, is taken and forwarded to the zoning hearing board as part of their hearing discussion?
There's no obligation really for the board to take any action, but you bring these all to the board, and they work, just that you have the opportunity to get involved and speak your opinion, doesn't work. And tell me again, planning?
Planning commission support the application, yes.
Well, part of Beverden, Mark, is twelve twenty-five, do you know where that's at, Paul?
I knew you were going to ask me that question, I forgot to look for Ellen, that was. I don't know, because the plan. Yeah, it's the Tell Hi, it's on the east portion of the river.
Okay. Tree line reports, we go up to the, we can have a second.
Yeah, there's, there's no location map on this plan, that's why. All neighbors would be notified of the hearing, that's right, all, all the years.
I'll make a motion to support. Do I hear a second? Paul Mader?
Aye.
Item three, motion to support, not support, or take no position on application twenty twenty-four dash three of the Chester County Solid Waste Department to construct a booster pump station on less than two acres and to end the setbacks at the northwest corner of Red War Road and Hill Horseshoe Pike.
And this, again, is a baron's request from Chester County Solid Waste for the minimal requirement for lot area, for a lot, these two acres, two net acres, that would be devoid of any kind of wetlands and so forth. They're requesting approximately half an acre of gross lot area, which is the area that they need for their booster pump. So they did feel that they wanted to retain or obtain additional lands beyond what they absolutely needed in order to install the booster pump. Along with that, there is a requirement to allow a fifty-foot setback from all lot lines, which they also would be requested relief from the fifty-foot requirement from property lines. They are proposing evergreen screening for the encroachment within that side or those setbacks. And again, the planning commission reviewed this at the last meeting, and again, recommended supporting the application based on information presented.
And would we gain or lose by not doing it?
Or could we gain or lose?
Why does this have support?
Station itself?
Station itself?
Yeah, I think I, I asked you, would we gain it from that pump station? So someone else is going to ask us.
Yeah, I thought lots of negative factors, Chester County Solid Waste Department. So we're proposing to extend the public water from right near Reservoir Road up to the top of the hill. And since it is uphill, there's not enough pressure in the current system pushing the water up there. So the booster pump station is required, and it's a similar building as what's on Route ten that the water party already has. So we're just trying to do a small lot and put the building on that lot and meet all the specifications of the water party.
And having the water up there does, does what? Does that affect us with safety? Is that?
Yes, there's going to be, there's going to be a number of fire hydrants along, going to be four hundred feet. And it's going to serve public water to anyone along the line, and we are along the line. We're, we're putting in a new building for permanent collection site of household passage space. And we're going to be running the water to that building, as well as other buildings and houses in the area.
Very good, thank you.
Do we have any idea how, would need one of these pumps are, sorry?
Well, it's all enclosed in a building, and it's in the bottom part of the building, and it's concrete and steel. So I really don't think there's going to be noise outside of the building.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Paul Faver?
Aye.
Item four, authorize or not authorize Resolution 2024-7 ratifying certain budget transfers to and from the general quarters in calendar year 2023. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. A, a budget is just a guiding document and we are, we are estimating what our revenues and we're also estimating with our expenses. Those don't need, you know, because they're going to be until after they come in. So best practice is to align last year's budgets at the end of the year numbers. Because we use previous year budgets as guidelines to look to build out the current and future budgets. So, you know, as there's revenue and expense differences because there's either building boom or not. You can determine whether that's going to continue or not. You can use proper numbers at the end of the year to help us guide that future budget process and stuff. If not, we have to go back budget to actual, which is a document that, you know, is typically not included in all four packets just for the current month. So we have to go back and look at January's prop to actual, and this is easier to align this way.
And just one other point, you know, the board is authorized under the second class county code to allocate unencumbered funds that it does have on items where we might exceed the budgeted amount. And so that is part of what's also being addressed with this resolution is ratifying those expenditures because there is extra money in the general fund above what was.
Okay. Do I hear, hear a motion to authorize?
I'll make the motion to authorize.
Second.
Paul Faver?
Aye.
Item five, accept, not accept a proposal of the Brantline Conservancy to assist with the 2017 land preservation plan update dated September 5th, 2023, including the cost of community services update, case study of build-out assessment in the amount of $17,000.
So every handful of years, we, we take a relook at our land preservation document, which is the guiding document that we use for our land preservation program here in the township. Just like any document, we can get a high level view where we can actually do a deeper dive into and ensure that document is, has the vision of the township. So I spoke with Shane, the head of land preservation, and he thinks that it's a good opportunity to typically take a look at the document and see if we can update any policies, principles, and also detail maybe what we have left to preserve and what that actual cost is going to be using the updated data of preserved lands that occurred here after year. So the Conservancy helped write the initial documents. They are material experts in conservation. This is definitely in their wheelhouse. They provide amazing services. They think outside of the box and find unique ways to get in preservation at the forefront of municipalities that are a farming community like ourselves. So again, you're seeing it as a map of that $17,000 cost. Some of it is subsidized, I believe, from some of their own grant funds going into. It's Shane from Land Preservation looked at it and he believes it's a, we should accept it. I've reviewed it, spoke with the Conservancy and agree that what you're seeing here as impermissible is something that the township or its supervisors should certainly.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to accept the proposal by Brantline Conservancy?
I believe some of the questions coming in from the residents of what's to be done, what's left to be done, how much money is there? Why, et cetera, et cetera. If it's good to reevaluate that and or help us out with some of the expenses. So I'm making my motion to do that.
I'll second. Paul Faver?
Aye.
Item six, approve or not approve Resolution 2024-8 authorizing the township manager to sign paperwork related to a Department of Conservation and Natural Resource grant for the resurfacing of tennis and basketball courts at James Umpel Park.
So is the board aware this January we appointed a grant by DCNR currently working on standard and second DCNR grant to, as we noted, resurface tennis, pickleball, and basketball courts? We did get a co-stars quota last year in excess of $330,000. DCNR representation that we've met with clearly indicated we can have multiple ongoing grant applications, so it's long term working towards successfully completing one. Grant writing is an art, so, you know, we said, really, the better written grants get more visibility. So part of this grant application is that the packet which is due for, it closes in March, has to include a resolution offer us and the board to go forward with it. So we are granted the award that we will fulfill, taking it into the project.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve signing of the Brantline Conservancy?
Plan B.
Oh, sorry, resolution, I called that. Plan B. Paul Faver? Item seven, motion to grant, not grant, a partial stormwater waiver to require a stormwater design for twenty parts, eight parts to mitigate the minimum of one half inch of rock across many acres in impervious coverage due to the hot water table and very limited infiltration.
So just to give a board a quick update on this, we are obviously working with the, with the planner that is involved with the skate park. We're performing the stormwater management review and preparing that plan as part of that project. When we went through the analysis, we did installation testing of the site. And what was revealed, as we expected, was substandard soil conditions and lack of infiltration rates to do a normal, what I would call a normal stormwater management system, using a subsurface system. One of the parameters in your stormwater ordinance, which is permitted for any land development that demonstrates those conditions, is to go with this half inch of runoff for the additional impervious that's being proposed. However, it needs relief from the board supervisors based on the recommendation of the engineer. So we're recommending that that way it would be granted in order for us to move forward with the storm's stormwater design based on that criteria that's in your word. It's given the conditions that are quite often the same. Obviously, that's something that is site dependent, does not change. It's purely based on what's there and the capability this soil is providing.
So you basically, does that boil down when you have an extra half an inch for the stormwater runoff load?
What, what it does is there's a minimum volume of water that you take into consideration. You meet your groundwater recharge requirement for stormwater. We meet the, we meet the rate requirements, we just don't meet the, the volume requirement of the, of the orders for groundwater recharge, just simply because the soil is capable of recharging that water. So we have control in place that meets all of your other code requirements. It's just it doesn't meet that, that volume requirement for groundwater recharging.
Do I hear a motion to grant partial stormwater waiver to require the stormwater to pass Umpel Park?
Do you hear a motion to grant?
Thank you. A second.
Paul Faver?
Aye.
Item eight, motion to adopt or not adopt Resolution 2024-9 appointing Warren Naveski as the township representative to the Berks County Cooperative Purchasing Council with Christie, Deitcher, Eddie as alternate.
So this is a cooperative purchase, excuse me, agreed that we are permitted to operate within the Commonwealth that allows multiple municipalities to come together to initiate metal prices for products. In this case, we're specifically looking at purchasing roots salt through the program. Currently, we operate with a Pennsylvania procurement system called Co-Stars, where we have to, by mid-year, tell Penda how much root salt we believe we might use. And then we're required to purchase 60% of that. So regardless if we have any winter root conditions in the past two years or not, you're still required to buy 60% of that total. Sometimes we don't have spots to store. And as the agreement is written, whatever ton we delta, we might have to pay a storage fee at the manufacturer. So with the Berks County Joint Purchasing Agreement, now this is also permitted under second class in this code. It's another joint purchasing program. They, again, do similar things as Co-Stars. The benefit of that is we can give them an estimate of how much root salt we would like to purchase, but we are not obligated to purchase any metal. So we have a year of no salt usage, we can purchase none. And if we have to use three times the amount of salt, we have no problems purchasing that. It also gives us the ability to use multiple vendors. We are locked in with state contracts based upon application in the county. In Berks County, if we find out that their root salt is better quality, we can elect to go with that product. Cost is similar to Co-Stars, it's going to be, I think, a dollar or two more per ton than I forget now what we're paying per ton.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six dollars per ton. So I think that costing is a less than a 5% difference. Allows us to keep our cost at an initial.
Does that only apply to root salt?
No, it's any kind of municipal purchasing that has to go through a competitive bid. Co-Stars, for those that aren't aware, vendors and suppliers are already pre-negotiated with the Commonwealth. So if the municipality might be willing to buy a vehicle, we can go through someone that already has a Co-Stars contract. They've already established discount pricing. And that way, that allows us to move ahead without through the complicated process of legal bids, opening bids, going with a little vendor that the Commonwealth has done that. So this joint purchasing agreement does similar plans. So they will have vehicle vendors that have already negotiated, which means the procurement bid specs. So they can do all kinds of office equipment. If you name it what the Commonwealth does, they probably do it on smaller level. So we can shop for anything that we typically have to do.
Do we want or the other?
No, we do all. Now, there's a Chester County one, we're actually looking at joining the Lancaster one. And again, it's a root salt, you know, they do competitive bidding for their salt. So there potentially could be four different vendors. And salt has different qualities and one vendor might produce a bad product one year. And if we are in multiple cohorts, we can solve or aim the product that more closely aligns with the township. So we're not, we're not locked into a single procurement organization.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to join the talk?
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Paul Faver?
Aye.
Motion to authorize or not authorize the township manager to list the 2003 GMC dump truck for sale in the disbid auction site.
So this is occurring because we ordered a new truck about two years ago. We finally took delivery for a couple minutes Monday. Is it 2022, 2023?
Yeah.
2023, fully, fully built out dump truck. So the one that we're asking to put out for auction has, has been our spare spare. So it's time for that to go. We do have another vehicle that's poured off for auction that's currently in its building state. So we're going to be getting that for a vehicle this year. So we don't have the space over there to keep storing vehicles that we know are in need. So at dump request, we asked them to put it on the disbid, which is we're permitted to, there's some values of the dump truck against the competitive auction standards.
Okay, do I hear a motion to sell in on disbid?
If we agree to, we're on the disbid. We agree right up to the disbid, when, when is it going?
Whenever Christie would take the picture, just make the ad and put it up. And it typically goes out for a two or two week or three day bid.
So I'll just throw this out there to Don, he's at work, keeping it for another month until the snow season's over? Just in case you have a trucker down before we do that or?
Yeah, we used, we used it yesterday, but I say let's, we got one truck done. We got it delivered here today, had a small problem earlier, so it's back. I'd say let's hold it off for a couple of weeks at least till we, you know, advertise it. So the authorization today doesn't mandate it. Anytime, anytime that we have to do that. So when Don comes over and tells Christie that it's time to, to part with it, then again, it's, it's typically a.
I'll make, I'll make the motion on the ground and you guys do what you think. Okay, that was fine.
I'll second. Paul Faver?
Sorry.
Item ten, a doubt, not a doubt, resolution in 2024, warrant diesel fuel contract through the Berks County Joint Purchasing.
So being a small municipality, we had failed to receive bids when we went, so a few years ago, so the previous township manager had worked with the Berks County Municipal Purchasing for fuelists through their school district system. They allowed us and we're in there with three or four other municipalities. We do a competitive bid, you'll see the tallywork sheets. Last year, they only did AMX pricing, which was just market rate plus. This year, we actually got front pricing for the diesel too. The diesel that we purchased, our tank wagon, and the business are there. And that is good through June 30th of 2025. And every year we give Don that list and we, we'll be reaching out for delivery. So it beats all the competitive bid standards and the cost is pretty, I'll say this year, that means 3.21B across the gallon through, through volume.
What's our whole site, storage capacity?
For here, 2,000.
And the gas is just diesel?
Just diesel.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Paul Faver?
Aye.
Item 11, motion to approve or not approve the partial release for Chestnut Ridge, stage one, honor of grace in the Chestnut Ridge Berks, 22-8-52.3, in the amount of $18,245 for completed site improvements.
Do you have any questions regarding the release? This is for landscaping improvements that were put in at the end of last year. And we are still withholding $208,656.96 for the remaining improvements, including final wear and course of roads and finishing the remainder of landscaping in spring, I would imagine, or some, at some point this year, third of my season.
Do you have any question?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Paul Faver?
Aye.
Item 12, motion to approve or not approve the partial release of funds for Chestnut Ridge, stages two and three, grace in the Chestnut Ridge Berks, 28-8-52.5 and 22-8-52.4 respectively, in the amount of $92,850 for completed site improvements.
And these are the active phases of Chestnut Ridge that are still under construction. So the majority of those, that number involves landscaping, placing of road signage, sidewalks, driveways, and related house construction for those phases. We are recommending that release and we will still be withholding an amount of $1,013,208.80. There's more than a million dollars left remaining in site improvements yet.
Do I hear a motion to approve the release, partial release?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Paul Faver?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Do we have any other new business?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Old business?
Just to note that potential purchase for the radio and also one of the mentioned last time, if all improves, so there is still a metal firm buyer. The county commissioner is still working on charred and varmints.
Okay, item J, could I perform on any other matter? Okay, three minutes, please.
The three minutes, I believe, are to begin after we address the standard protocol, which...
No, we're starting, we're starting. Do you need some microphone?
Can anybody hear me when I stand here? If somebody can't, then I'll move to the microphone.
I get...
Oh, you're, your time's running.
I find it hardly irregular that you put the time running now. I'm supposed to say my name. It's very important that we understand names. You folks here earlier pledged allegiance to a flag. They mistakenly called the flag the United States of America. That's a Navy flag, a military flag for the Navy. It's important that we respect or work together with our different jurisdictions. Your jurisdiction is a very important one. It's under the Navy jurisdiction. It's needed for these important things like Donald Johnson's work with the roads during his public service. However, there's such a thing as overreach. I stand here as a living man in God's jurisdiction, visiting at your jurisdiction, pleading, really pleading to your hearts, which I believe are part of God's jurisdiction, that you will stand in your roles as supervisors to fulfill your mandate, to uphold the Constitution of Pennsylvania in your application of the regulations, in your building of the regulations. And presently, this regulation regarding cemetery permits has been applied in such a manner as to violate our religious rights in our church, my personal religious rights, my wife's, my beloved's rights, who's now crossed the threshold. And I know many, a good many, who bury their dogs on their properties. According to the definition of your cemetery regulation, they should have a cemetery permit the way we're interpreting it in our case. Because it includes animal remains. I know Amish buried their horses on their property. I know people who buried multiple dogs on the property. In that standard practice here, the Honeybrook Animal Hospital releases dead dogs for people to bury on their property. But my beloved's body, consecrated to a whole life of love, total service to the Christ, total circus, this body that she consecrated has been stolen. And we cannot perform and practice our religion that her body be buried where it belongs, where she designated it, where God has designated it. And we're forced to go through a cemetery permit process for a legal entity that is the president of the township. I have signature authority for this entity. I've gone through all the applications for this.
Okay, I appreciate you talking. I'm sorry to cut you off, but this is a business meeting.
This is a business meeting that's being conducted in a highly irregular manner of...
Okay, you want to get someone else to... Someone else also has a right to talk, thank you. Is anyone else on this side?
Does anybody else want to prohibit me from finishing in another couple minutes?
Excuse me, it's not up to them. Time to sit down.
Okay, does anyone, does anyone on this side have anything else they'd like to say?
I'm leaving now.
Okay, have a good evening. Does anyone on the left-hand side have anything they'd like to say?
I don't know how you can have a good evening when you want to torture me, when you're just no compelling interest. This township must have compelling interests.
Sir, you dropped it, Ken.
Well, thank you very much.
All right.
My apologies that anybody raising my voice...
Anybody here?
Yes, can I?
Because I want to be heard.
Thank you.
The park, Catherine Racing, 424 Walnut Road, Honeybrook. The park was installed with the, the uncle park was installed with the understanding that it would always be fenced. Without a fence, small children at the playground and their parents at the picnic area are only feet away from great danger. There was a young boy that was killed there. This is a dangerous area. And when that boy died, I wasn't even notified. It could have been on my property. It could have been on the farmer's property. I have no idea because I was never told. The property consists of creeks, two creeks, swamps, detention basin, a large pond, woods. The neighbor has the same, a very large pond, that's only feet away. Also, an owner on Walnut that has the cows, he also has a property there. He's not even aware that he owns it. Prior, or a relative, I believe, he didn't tell him the party goes over. It consists of a lot of things that little kids without a fence don't know that they're going to get in trouble. There's swamps, there's woods, two creeks. Parents don't know what's even behind those woods, that it could be detrimental to kids. Parents take their kids to the park to be safe and have a good time. And it is not a good area for kids playing beyond the prior fence area. The children are at risk. Also, I might let everybody know that, I'm sure you don't know, that there's a detention basin on my property that in a heavy room will go up to three or four feet of water in an area bigger than this room. And you're going to let all these kids on a rainy day run in here? And don't say it's my problem because the township put the park in, they put the detention basin in, all before I owned it. So I don't want somebody saying, well, just put a fence up. It's not that simple. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm her next for you, so it...
I have to add one question. May I, is there kids playing in the detention pond on one of...
It's only six feet from your, from the township park.
Right.
From, from the park, it took down the fence.
Is this room? Like, I'm just trying to visualize, like...
The detention basin is bigger than this room.
Behind the park, okay. And kids go into the detention pond on your property to play?
Yes, yes. Also, I might add, why didn't the fence come over there? Parents bring their kids to the park to have a good time and play. They don't watch them. They think they're safe.
So it's a grand problem that we've got kids where they want someone else's property and play in the detention pond.
Well, it looked, now the fence is down now. As long as the fence was there, we didn't have little kids. Fence is down, we're going to have little kids. Little kids don't know any better. Putting up signs, kids can't read.
Parents do.
No, they don't know what is behind the trees. They... Also, I might add, why wasn't the fence taken down on the property on the doorshim? They took all my fence down, all the, the plea, what's his name, Amish guy, his whole fence was taken down. He has a huge pond, half a big pond, just several feet from your boundary line. I don't get it. I just don't understand. I was told you're not putting the fence back up. And I don't get it. That fence was not in bad shape.
I personally didn't build one up, but I'm all for, I'm all for a fence for your park personally myself.
Well, that's nice if you have, you know, a nice open land beyond it. But we have, I have a half a big pond. The Amish fellow has a half a big pond. I also have that long as the detention basin. Is this fair? Is this, you know, is this one paying my taxes for? So that some kid can walk in there and then sue me? I'd like to hear some reaction.
And I would also.
I think we took down the fence because it was in a state of disrepair. That's what I remember from that meeting. That was what, for a...
It was what? Excuse me?
December's meeting. Yeah, November, December's meeting.
November, December's meeting. I have pictures of that fence. There was one place that had a hole, and it was cut there purposely to let the kids through, the big kids. Nobody else knew about it. I knew about it. I didn't complain. Some kids can't keep that, and some kids it doesn't matter.
And that's true.
But all these little kids, you know...
That's turned my head a little bit. So there's a whole fence that we knew about, we're not... Say that again?
Pardon me?
Say that again? There's a whole fence that we're allowing some kids... So some kids have access, and some kids didn't have access?
That hole was not on my side of the property. Yeah, there's a hole in it. It's been there for 30 years. One fence has been there, that hole's been here.
Hasn't been there that long.
Donnie, are we repairing our fences for 30 years? Are we repairing our fences for 30 years?
No.
I think... Do you have pictures going back 10 years?
I, yeah.
The whole fence?
Oh, yeah, half a hole, yeah.
Hey, Donnie, how many years have you worked in the public works?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine years you've been employed here. Okay, thank you. That he has oversight of this park. And again, you're inherently stating that... I'm not sure if the implication is that the township cut a hole in it.
I don't think so.
And that we're clarifying that our public works director is fixing it. And at the meeting that we talked about, it does take additional cost and time to lead whack against that fence. And it's, the township's prerogative to remove the fence of our property. It is township property, and we elected to remove it.
Okay. Okay, I know, I understand.
And everyone has property rights, and you have property rights. And if you want to restrict access to your property, you're mad illegal. You need to do yourself.
Do you, like, is it, is it, I won't, she put up a fence or not?
As long as it complies with zoning laws.
Of course. So as a township, and again, I didn't vote on it, just always asked for it, I would, and I would support it. That's just my personal opinion. If we decide to take down the fence, you can certainly put up a fence.
Pardon me?
You can put up a fence.
Yeah, I might want to.
And you're welcome to. You do it within the compliance of the order.
I mean, if this is the township's final word, you're not going to put it back up, right? I'm not even forced to put a fence up.
If you're not playing, put the fence back up.
I wouldn't have kids in my yard playing in my pond or detention basins or playing in anything.
Well, here's another issue. Even if I put a fence up, kids will climb it. What do I do then?
I think repair it.
I mean, I'm going to put up a half fence. I can't afford a six-foot fence. I'm not even sure I can afford a posted rail. Like, the guy in the plea, he's putting up a posted rail or half fence, whatever. But he already has it in the barn. I'm not that fortunate. I don't have it in my barn. I'm not born. So I'm really, really upset. I think it's wonderful what you're doing in that park. It's fabulous. The kids around here need it. Heaven knows they need it. I hear the drugs down there. That's another thing. Now that, now that they can walk out of the back, the cops won't even be able to catch them.
Can you go into more detail about the drug use that you mentioned?
What?
Can you go, you've mentioned that there are drugs used in the park. Can you...
Oh, I thought the drug use to walk down there, find, lie in the needles and also condom, condos, whatever they call them. Yeah, I mean, that park is a disaster.
Donnie, do we find drug needles through the park when we do our walks?
We used to, but since we blocked it off, they can't drive back here. We haven't found it.
Yeah, why do they stop for I.D. back there?
Because they were tearing the yard up back here. Of course, it got back here, middle lane turf and everything, tear it up. I put the concrete block here, and I stopped it.
Yeah, they're going around and using drugs.
They're still going to go, they're still tearing the other field up if they're not getting back here.
They're going to violate the law, man. They're going to go around and do it.
Yep.
If you put a fence up, if they want to climb over it, if someone wants to climb over it, they're going to climb over it. If we put a barricade up, it reduces the amount... How much did that barricade reduce the vandalism back there? Significant portion?
Just about completely.
So it's had a positive effect? So there's reasons and rationales that we do it, that we might not discuss in detail. But the roadmaster and I, the director of public works, discussed it. I was a police officer for 29 years. I am very well versed on crime and statistics and why it happens and means to stop it in ways that it won't stop. And it's a complicated issue. So I worked with the director of public works when we made a determination. And the actions that we have done have reduced crime and the vandalism that we have to use taxpayer dollars to fix. It doesn't mean that also that it's a magical bullet and that nobody will now do anything illegal at that park. That is, that is a vision that is unrealistic.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying. I have no problem with any of that. But what if that the five-year-old kid that walks 10 feet...
What is the parents doing? I have two kids. I am responsible for my children.
A lot of parents don't even go there with their kids. I've seen like five...
Whose responsibility is it to oversee their kids? Who's leading the responsibility, ma'am?
They're not.
Who's responsibility? Don't skirt the question. Who is responsible for overseeing the welfare of their children?
Their parents.
Not the township park.
You're right.
I know I'm right.
You're right.
I know I am right.
You're encouraging children.
We're not encouraging anything. Do you trespass? Okay, so what you're telling me is every time you see a property without a fence, you walk on it?
Yes.
You do. You trespass.
Let me tell you another...
No, 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 let's not jump on this. So if you don't see something, you're going to ju... It's called being educated and well, brought up by your parents. And we can go around and round, ma'am. The responsibility is on a parent to oversee their children.
And how do you make them do that?
It's a different conversation.
It's a different conversation. That's the township that's at our mercy.
Just a lottery later on.
I think it's time we move on.
Yeah. Okay, Valerie?
I have a question about item number six, the junk revitalization grant. As Warren stated, it sounded like that resolution was to approve the money for that grant, and it got approved. Since the resolution is not attached to the impact, I don't know how much that is for. I know the original quote that they had received for redoing the resourcing the tennis basketball courts was unusually high, and parts of the record included that. So before you guys approve the release of that money, if it gets, if it actually gets approved by DCNR, it would be nice for the public to know what that amount is.
You're asking what the amount of the grant is?
Yeah.
What is the amount of the grant?
We don't know, it's not a version.
So I assume, I assume you're attaching your quote for the work along with that grant. Is that correct or no? So you have to tell them what, how much it's going to cost?
Sure, we're going to submit that proposal with that money, but they can come back with any amount. They typically have a $250,000 soft cap, but it is a 50-50 split. So they can do no more than 50% grant awards of whatever we're talking about.
And so what is the quote that you guys have submitted?
I think it's the $330,000. I haven't submitted it yet, but part of the...
That's a general situation, right?
Correct, but for us to apply for the grant, we have to show a resolution saying that we're authorized to apply to it. We don't have to accept the award, but they have to show that the person submitting it, which is going to be me, has the legal authority to do it, and that I'm just not applying for grants that the board supervisors, she doesn't know about at all.
Was there a competitive bid that was put into that park? That's what I'm wondering. Is that 300,000 dollars?
Is a Co-Stars bid? I guess that was my other question. You indicated that, is that normally high? What are you basing that on?
There was comments at the park and rent meeting that people have said that they thought that was an unusually high amount.
Which, which...
The person rent board.
So did someone get quotes? Did other members of the board see quotes? Or did they have some material obstruction? So their statements, are they based just upon the number? Or did someone actually do research of what other resourcing costs? I just want to clarify...
Yeah, I want to clarify.
Sure.
I can go back and review the, this, you know...
It was a few minutes ago, I can go back and go forward myself.
Yeah, and was you, did you show me?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
I, I would love to see where, what, what, what that was, to show that the quote was that normally high based upon.
And regardless of what has been done to get it anyway, well, and updated.
Correct, we would keep to get an updated.
So we could talk all we want about what was said six months ago, but then I don't care what was.
It, it was a question about how much was the cost projected to be and whether there was a competitive program. That was all I asked.
Yeah, it's 335 and the vendor is a co-stars vendor. So they already went through that competitive bidding process that we just spoke about uh with the road self purchases. So they had actually uh applied with the competitive co-stars program with the Commonwealth and pre-negotiated the discounts that they provide to be able to be considered a competitive bid.
And, and one last question, I would also like to know, um, I know Warren, you had indicated that, you know, we're using an outside contracting firm to write the grants. Um, are you aware that your predecessor, Steve Landis, wrote the last DNR grant that was actually approved?
Yes.
So why?
Where's Steve at?
Well, so, do you know Steve's history?
I don't know Steve.
So my question is, he got approved. So my question is, why are we not going through training to do this yourself? Why are we going to an outside firm to pay them $10,000 a year for?
So you're saying, so you're.
To write a grant.
So where are you getting your $10,000 from?
That, that was how much you had allocated this year for writing grants. That was in the budget.
I, I know what the cost will be. So do you know Steve Han, Steve Landis's history?
All I know is that he got the grant approved successfully, that's all I need to know.
Did you, no, do you know, did you know what he did previously? Did you know he was the director of park and rec and that writing park and rec grants was part of his job? And that his spouse was.
Why is it not an option for you to get trained?
Everything is an option. Yeah, everything is an option. Do you know what I do every, every hour of the day? Do you know what my application is?
You got a pretty substantial raise last year that the trust required training.
Here we go. What's the county average? Here we go. What's the county average for me?
Excuse me? Excuse me?
No, I don't think we will.
Please do not act disrespectful to me. I'm not acting disrespectful to you.
You are disagreeing.
You're a negligent employee.
You told our township manager that way, you are acting disrespectful.
Because asking him to do his job?
How are you asking to do his job? And is that his job? And is that our township manager's job?
It's not his job?
Is it?
He got $47,000 raise last year. I think he should be able to step up to the job.
During this meeting. During the meeting.
I agree, I think the meeting was, um.
We're having a bit of disrespect in this room.
Yeah, no, it's shit, it's not from you.
Yeah, I, I just want to talk about, yes, Valerie and Warren, both letters will be submitted to the board. Ask for competitive bidding and I thought that was reasonable. And I think it's in writing on those letters, I just wanted to.
And, and it's been done.
I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.